We're going to call an order, the row, the public hearing for June 28th. Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Jason Hood. Janice Carter Beer. Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Mike Williams.
Here. Item number one, an ordinance to amend the City of Hammond budget for fiscal year 2015-16 in accordance with procedures set within Section 5 dash 03 of the City of Hammond Charter. SADA.
Yeah, we are just amending the 2015-16 budget.
Do we, do we have any discussion on this?
No, there's no any discussion, Mr. President. You know, we, we talked about fully funding the, you know, on the entire budget. We wanted to consider the council to, to add the $20,000 to the Marshall's Office General Administration Fund so that we can fund them based on last year's dollars. And that would change their total to 817, 291. And that 20,000 bucks would come from the general fund, which would take that up to 241, 291, and it would reduce the ending year balance to 117, 856. Might have consideration for that when we vote on the budget.
And councilman, that's really on the next agenda item because this amends the current year budget.
Yeah, this is for the last year in the one you're talking about for the coming year, next year.
But that's good, but I'm glad you-
Well, yeah, so.
Okay.
So, do we have any, any other discussion on this item number one? Any public comments or questions? Item number two, an ordinance to adopt the City of Hammond budget fiscal year 2016-17 in accordance with procedures set within Section 5 dash 03 of the City of Hammond Charter. And there are several attachments, and I think you have it printed out as well.
Right.
So, this is-
My comment just may reply in this case.
Right.
We'd like to encourage, ask the council to consider that when we, when we run on that.
Do we have any, any council comments or questions? Any public comments or questions? All right. Item number three, an ordinance to adopt the filing of adjusted millage rates, and they're hereby levied upon the dollar of the assessed valuation of all property subject to abhorrent taxation within said corporate limits of the City of Hammond for the year 2016 for the purpose of raising revenue. General fund, 9.010 mils. Fire police, 9.96 mils. For a total of 18.97 mils. Ms. Jenny.
Good afternoon. Well, we're setting the millage rates for 2016. It is a reassessment year. We have to adopt what the assessor has levied for us first, and that's what I'm proposing in this first ordinance.
Any questions or comments from the council? From the public? All right. Item number, item number four, an ordinance to increase the millage rates but not to exceed the prior year's maximum rates on all taxable property within the corporate limits of the City of Hammond. Shown on official assessment roll for the year 2016, when collected, the revenues from said taxes shall be used only for specific purposes for which said taxes have been levied. Said millage rates are, general fund, 9.40. Fire police, 10 mils. Public works, 2 mils. For a total of 21.04 mils.
This ordinance will allow us to roll up to the maximum allowed, which has already been before voters in the past, and will also be the same millage rate that was, that we had last year. So, all we're doing is rolling up to the max, which will be the same as last year with no increase.
Any questions or comments from the council? From the public? All right. Item number five, an ordinance to rezone requests by Charles Street LLC to rezone 507 to 509 West Charles Street, 100 feet by 150 feet from RS 11 to RS 3, higher K overlay. Recommended approval two to one with the understanding any subdivision requests will be brought to the planning commission for approval. Josh.
Three lots on the corner. Pretty sure we're familiar with it on Charles Street. And wanting to rezone it from RS 11 to RS 3. Reason is for setbacks. Getting away from variances, could've gone the variance route, but getting a lid back on variances is extremely difficult, as Andre can attest to. So, rezoning and not issuing variances because there are a tremendous amount of variance requests already coming in for that area seemed like a better fit. The lots are three 50-foot legal lots, as is right now. So, subdividing it down to 40-foot, which is the concern that we've heard, isn't really feasible. Can't get any more than's already there. You have three lots, you've got 150 feet, you can only go three lots with 40-foot because you'd have a chunk left over. So, three lots is what it is.
So, the lots are already 50 feet.
They're already 50 foot.
Staying 50 feet, it's just a rezoning.
Correct. This is just a rezoning, so. And just to be clear, the next, um, next item is the same exact thing, just a different order. It's the third lot of the three.
Is anyone in the public that would like to speak on this item? All right. Item number six, an ordinance to re, to approve rezoning requests by Andrew and Jeanette Gassway to rezone 511 West Charles Street from RS 11 to RS 3, higher K overlay. Recommended approval with the understanding any subdivision requests will be brought to the planning commission for approval.
Same situation we just spoke about, just the third lot.
Any questions or comments from the council? Any public comments for or against?
Thank you.
Just one question, Mr. President. When we, when a couple of minutes ago, Josh, I know when we looked at the map, we saw all those R11, you know, areas. Is this the attempt to, to rezone those areas based on?
No, we were looking at RS 11A. There's RS 11, and then there's RS 11A. RS 11A allows for mobile homes, RS 11 does not. So, this is a different situation altogether.
All right, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Josh.
No problem.
Item number seven, an ordinance to revise ordinance 2526 restricted conditional use request by Michelle Bell &amp; Incorporated for Sections 1, 2, and 3 to read RM 2 and Section 6 to read in accordance with site plan by Environmental Design Systems dated revised 4/26/2016 to allow additional, addition to existing building located 1106 South Holly Street, zone RM 2 conditional use in Iowa, additional overlay. Recommended approval by the zoning commission. Josh.
Third one is Michelle Bell. They did a conditional use in the past. In the conditional use, any alterations they made to the site plan had to come back for approval, and that's what this is. There was a couple of changes in their conditional use, which just made the, the zonings align. In the past, it was R5, and we don't have R5 anymore. That switched to RM 2. So, we just did some cleanup on that language, so. Other than that, that's it.
Do we have any, any questions from the council? Do we have any public comment for or against this item? No public comment? Thank you, Josh.
No, I won't be at the next meeting. This is my last year.
I'd like to recognize Josh for all the work that he's done for the city. He's done offered a really good job that we couldn't truly compete with because of his capabilities. So, we thank you for the service that you give in the city. We will miss you. You would definitely be a loss to us. We wish you well in your endeavors.
Well, thank you, guys. It's been a pleasure working with you too, you know. So, if you ever need me, I'm there. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. All right, we'll move right into our regular scheduled meeting. Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Jason Hood. Janice Carter Beer.
Here.
Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Mike Williams.
Here. Chuckie, would you mind leading us on the prayer, please?
Father God, we come this evening to this council meeting. We ask your blessing upon each of our council members, Father God. We ask that you conduct our business here this evening in the honor in which you would like to have it conducted, Father God. We ask the blessing on each member here and each person that chose not to be here today, Father God. We ask these blessings in our son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I would invite all veterans and active military, please, to please render proper salute. Council marshal, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any council reports? Mayor?
Chief John Thomas. I was afforded the, a visit today with the 1954 ladder fire truck by the Cialina family. They had redone the fire truck, and it is beautiful. It'll be out at the 4th of July event waving a flag alongside of the new truck that we have. So, that's unbelievable what they did to that truck. He asked me to take you a little more, take a look at it. It's a, it's, it's a beautiful job that they did. The Cialina family dominated all the work that they did to that truck, and it's fully functional. Everything works. Along with that, once again, we are going to have a 4th of July event. It's going to start at 5:30. The festivities will start at 5:30. We have some nonprofits that will be out there providing food and drinks, snowballs. We also have a DJ for the kids. We're going to have train rides for free, bounce houses for free, climbing the wall for free. We want to thank First NBC for being our sponsor donor without being a living thing possible, along with other sponsors, Cash Crew Drains, Sandwich, Henry Power Media, Industrial Electric. Thank you, Andre. Lord Oil, Pine Foods, Speed Steel Insurance. Once again, Star Equipment, they always allow us to use their trailer for the stage. North Coast Health System with the first aid tent and the ambulance service in case we need that. The fireworks will start at 9:00. It should be a packed event because usually Ponchatoula and Hammond does it in conjunction on the same night. Theirs will be on Friday, ours will be on Monday, so if you want to enjoy theirs on Friday, I'm sure they'll be packed as well as us on Monday on the actual 4th of July date. So, we look forward to seeing everyone there. We have a new business coming into town. Dairy Queen has just purchased the property behind McDonald's on Railroad Avenue, the old car wash, Mr. Tom's Car Wash. So, they'll be placing a Dairy Queen there, hopefully within the next five, six months. So, we're looking forward to that.
That's exciting. Everybody's excited.
Yeah. Eat fresh. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
What time did practice start?
I'm sorry, Mr. President. That was, that was a slip.
Are there any other new businesses that would like to be recognized in the audience? Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes of June 14th? If so, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beer.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
New business, number one, a resolution to approve the holiday closing schedule for non-municipal fire and police personnel for fiscal year 2015-16-17. Ms. Loretta.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I believe you have an attachment of the holiday schedule?
Yes.
And it is municipal, non-municipal fire and police personnel because those individuals commemorate the actual day of the holiday, and it's through the, uh, the rules of the Civil Service Board. This year, we have an extra one, Election Day. So, for a total of 15 holidays for employees.
Any questions?
One of the benefits of being a city employee.
Any questions or comments from the public?
Motion approved.
Roll call, please.
Thank you.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beer.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number two, a resolution to approve the appointment of James Stewart as the police chief with an annual salary of $81,542, pay grade 138, step 21, effect August 1st, 2016. Mayor?
I think council members, Matt with James, James' background, we put in the newspaper, attended Loyola University, worked for NOPD and the Orleans Sheriff's Police Department, Sheriff's Office for 13 years, I believe. Moved on to the FBI for 21 years, and he's been all over the country with the FBI. He's finishing up his tenure with the FBI in Pensacola, and thus be moving with the council's approval to Hammond, Louisiana with his wife Donna, August 1st.
Any questions or comments? Any questions from Mr. Stewart is here? Any comments or questions from the public? Come on up, sir. State your name and address for the record.
Dr. Oscar Dantzler Jr. Um, I'm a, we kind of against the chief of police being appointed there by the mayor. We feel that the chief should be an elected position and should be accountable to the taxpayer, just like the councilman and the mayor. You all had to go out there and solicit the vote, walk the streets and talk and get known in the public input. We think that it should be placed on the ballot, and not only at the process, the way it was selected, we think that it wasn't fair because I think if the councilman had to view candidate not being recommended by the mayor, I think all candidate that survive applications for the chief of police should have been viewed by the council, not just one recommendation. So, we strongly feel that this chief should be elected. Number two, if it don't reside within the city limits of Hammond, then we stepping over boundaries. All elected positions supposed to reside within the city limits of Hammond. And if the council approve outside, then what about their position? What about council from Florida or New York want to run for y'all position, or y'all want to pass a bill for that? So, we asking that the council will vote down this and allow the taxpayer to be able to vote and place it on the ballot coming up to be elected position. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Janey Robinson, Hammond, Louisiana.
I'm sorry, what's your address?
Janey Robinson, 635 South Morrison Boulevard, Hammond. His resume is definitely impressive. I just want to know if there will be an objective given by the chief to maybe tell us what his plans are for the different communities. My specific question would be about community policing because it's just, there's a desperate need for it in the City of Hammond. So, that's what I wanted to know. Is he going to give any goals and objectives to the council or to the city that we can see?
I can speak for, for myself. We, we each had an opportunity with Mrs. Stewart. I did ask him about community policing and being visible in the community, and he assured me that that would be a big part of his, his role, and I think that, and I don't want to put words in the mayor's mouth, but he also indicated that whoever the new chief would be, he would be expected to be, you know, on the street and not behind a desk.
Are there any plans to make that, make his goals and objectives public?
All right. Would you like to speak to that, Mr. Stewart? You certainly can.
That would be my last question.
Yes, to, to answer your question, goals and-
James, what, state your name.
I'm sorry, yeah, James W. Stewart, and I'm from Pensacola, Florida. And yes, ma'am, goals and objectives are part of leadership, and it's part of management, and I will put together a, a goals and objective package for, for the mayor so he'll understand kind of where I want to be within the next few months, and then within the next year or something along those lines. But just definitely goals and objectives are, are part and parcel to any, any type of management in any field. So, I will definitely do that for you.
When interviewed, that was one of the most important things in my life, is to have community people, to have Jim in the, in the public, out in the community, not in the office. It's one of the things I emphasize. I realize that you need to administrate, manage from the office, but I want him to lead by example, and that's what I'm saying.
I guess my, my last question was, are they, his goals and objectives going to be made public?
Yes. He's going to have some interviews, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
James, I do have, I do have one-
He just wanted to meet with, with community leaders and stakeholders like yourself who are concerned at any point in time, once he gets here, August 1st.
You, you do understand you have to live in the city?
Yes, sir, I do.
Of Hammond. You plan on-
Yes, sir. Yeah, we're, we're looking for, we're going to look for a place here real soon.
We'd like for you to move in District 4.
Yes. District 3. District 1, 2.
We're, we're going to ask you, we're going to offer you a house in District 4, John.
If that's the case, put him on the line.
Any, any other public-
Mr. President, can you, just for the record, I mean, I know Dantzler made a comment. I just want you to, for the record, let's just clarify the ordinance and why, so please, if you don't mind doing that.
I'll let Andre do it. I don't think that the council has an opportunity to make an elected position.
That would require a change of the charter.
I just want to make sure that we, that the public understands that that isn't our charter, and so the mayor is allowed to, authorized to, to hire the next chief. And, and then the chief is accountable to the mayor, and then the mayor is accountable to the council and the, and the community.
Correct.
So, that's how that would kind of work.
And the city members, all within that five mile buffer.
But also just on, add on to that, we, we all had a chance, just, Jeanette, just let you know that, I think all of us had a chance, the council, like the president said, to, to meet with the, with James or Mr. Stewart, and, and we asked the same questions that you asked. We were very, I know I was, we met for an hour and a half, and, and I came right after Councilman Blunt was just in there for an hour, and I think we all pretty much asked the same questions. I got a good, a good feel for, for that. So, we, we're representing our districts, and we have the same concerns that you have, you know, as far as crime and those things in, in our areas, and we were, I think we've been on point on that.
Come on up. Please state your name and address for the record.
Tyrone Tony Jr., 806 Natchez, Hammond, Louisiana. My question is, like with our last chief, if he do something, he get in trouble, he asks him to the mayor and everything, so that means he's under an umbrella, so where we pay, us taxpayers can't pay his legal fees and stuff, dealing with that. Uh, I ain't saying you finna get no trouble, but, uh, I don't want to pay for it. You know what I'm saying? So, how, how we going about that?
I think, and Andre, go ahead.
Well, tell me, what's the question?
Well, I, I guess the previous chief is under civil service, much harder to discipline and, and terminate someone under civil service. Uh, Mr. Stewart, if, if appointed, will be a department head. So, he's under the mayor's purview. The mayor, of course, if, if anyone is terminated, they have a right for legal recourse, but I think that the, the, the rules of engagement, so to speak, for non-civil service are much, uh-
It's not for us to provide as leader.
Correct.
All right. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Take a question.
Mr. Dangerfield. This is a gentleman, Jimmy, will be meeting with us.
Good afternoon. My name is Ronald Dangerfield, and I'm resident of 314 Wilbur Dangerfield Drive. I'd like to say welcome, Mr. Stewart. Mr. Dantzler, we understand your concerns. We have a drug problem, sir. We have a drug problem. Now, it's turning over to murders. We like to see the police in the community. There are those of us in the community who know who's selling the dope and not afraid to turn them in. We just wish that you would take in, work with us, come see us. Hey, some of us have some money, some of us don't. Some of us have a little money. But one thing we do all have is children, and we want our children safe in the communities. The children are the future of our community. I recently heard that there's an influx, influx of heroin. That girl ain't nothing nice. We want you to help us.
You're welcome.
All right. Like I said, welcome. The mayor and the councilmen and the council ladies, they've been fair with me. They try to answer all my questions, give me all the help I can. We need that presence in our community. Thank you.
Mr. Dangerfield, just so you know, we have same concerns. I, I expressed this, you know, my business has been robbed more times than I can, I can't admit. I have daughters who drive around this community, and, and that's a big concern of mine, so I, I, I'll absolutely want him and the police visible because it's scary. So, we have the same concerns. Trust me, we, we want whoever the chief is to be successful.
Right. Because, uh, uh, no matter what part of the city you go to, now, all parts of the city is dangerous.
There's no, that's right.
And we've been working together, and I can assure you that you'll be meeting with him shortly.
I appreciate it.
Come home on August 1st, and we'll get together with you.
That's a good deal.
Thank you so much.
Like I say again, welcome, sir.
Appreciate it.
Okay. I would like to let the public know also when I met with Mr. Stewart, I also spoke to him about community policing. Growing up here in the City of Hammond, we always knew who, uh, the police knew us and we knew them. We worked with Mr. Roger Dangerfield, Mr. Charlie Muse, and not only did they know the parents, they knew the kids. And so, I talked to him about that. The murder you're talking about, that was in my district. I had a talk with the mayor about that. I talked to Mr. Stewart about that. I let him know that we wanted, uh, to see a presence of patrols, that we were looking for more lighting. I let him know that we, like the gentleman said, we do have people in, uh, in the communities that are willing to speak up, that are, that are not afraid of making sure that we get this element that's trying to come into the City of Hammond out. We do not want to be afraid. We want to be able, our kids to walk down the streets and play in our parks, or not to be afraid to go to school or go to the grocery store. We want to be able to come home in the evenings and be able to get out of our car without worrying about if somebody going to be shooting in a few minutes. So, all of this has been, when we had the meetings, when we were first looking, talking to the communities about the chief and what we were looking for, I noticed that I, I came to all of the meetings except for one, and all of the one, uh, community leaders and stuff that came in, one of the main things that they expressed is they want a community policing. And that was a main issue with, I think, each other council members.
Right.
That you want to be able to talk to the people in the community. If you don't know the people, then you don't know who would talk to you and who won't. You don't know who would turn somebody in and who won't. You have some people that are afraid to speak up, but you have others that are not, and those of us that are not afraid will speak up for those that are. And he has, let's sit there and listen to us. He talked to us about what, uh, he had the issues that he has worked with before. He had also told us that he's been on both sides of the coin. He's worked with people with the Civil Rights Division, so he's worked with people who had beef with the, with the police department, and he's also worked with the police department on issues that, with the police. So, those questions have been asked. I'm pretty sure if I was in your position, I'd be doing the same thing, asking again to make sure that that issue has been covered. But we have covered those issues. I was pretty much satisfied with the answers that he gave me. You know, I haven't come up with any other questions that I could ask him, and all I could say is, it's going to take all of us, working together, to keep the City of Hammond safe. Meaning if, just like with national security, see something, say something. Because, I mean, you know, we want to stay, we don't mind growing, but we want to keep this small-town mentality.
Thank you, councilman. Any, any further comments from the public?
I just want to say something.
Sure. Mr. Stewart, come up. I'm sorry. Got to get it on microphone.
As a member of the committee, the interview committee, I, I do want you to know that we had many applicants, over 25, 30 applicants who applied. We had one in-house applicant who applied, a very, very capable person. He has the pulse of the community. I expect our new chief to work with that individual, and I'm sure he will. I, I mimic what Councilman Beard said, as far as Mr. Stewart's knowledge and working knowledge of civil rights, that will help our community on both sides of the fence. And I, I think we made a good decision, especially the mayor. Kudos to him. And I just hope that we're able to work together.
Thank you, Ms. Loretta. Thank you, Ms. Loretta. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Yeah. Roll call, please.
Janice Carter Beer.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Jason Hood. Motion approved.
Congratulations.
All right, item number three, a resolution to approve change order number two final on sidewalk drainage improvements for year 2015, Project 420-11509, an amount of $70,069.18 credit.
Do you have it hyperlinked?
Yes.
It's the whole list of items. This is a final change order. As always, adjusting the final quantities for the job, and the reason it is a rather large number is we still have two railroad crossings that a lot of these items were included in, General Pershing and Harden Drive. We're- We're still waiting on permits on those, so this money will stay there. Hopefully, we get the permits in and can release that later. Recommend approval of change order two, final, in the amount of decrease of seventy thousand, sixty-nine dollars and eighteen cents.
Well, it's, I think it's public. All right, any questions, Webb?
If we never get a permit, we can.
There you go. Which with the railroad might be the case.
And DOTD, it's two entities we're.
There you go.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beer.
Aye.
Jason Hood. Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Item number four, resolution to approve, I'm sorry, to accept work as substantially complete, and commence a forty-five day lien period with holding five percent retained for sidewalks and drainage for year ending 2015. Webb?
That's the same job that we just accepted the final change order for.
Motion to approve.
Second. Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beer.
Aye.
Jason Hood. Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Webb.
Thank you.
Number five, resolution approving quick weight number five, located at fourteen, 633 University Avenue, to obtain a conditional alcohol permit to sell high, low packaged alcohol, the condition being that the health, fire, and building inspections are completed before issuing the alcohol permit. Ms. Jenny?
This is a new business that's come to town. It's over across from Trey Inn on University on the corner there. All does seem to be in order. We do have some of the inspections that we had requested a conditional on came in today. The fire and the health has been approved. We're just waiting now on one, which will be the building department to come in last and inspect everything, and there again, like I said, it is a new, brand-new building, and they've been working diligently on that to get it up and running for the first. So the condition would be only on the one inspection left to be done. Everything else does seem to be in order. They will be selling, requesting to sell, in this case, packaged alcohol, high and low content, and I do have a representative here tonight to talk to you. Want to come up? You have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is James Berry. My address is 12408 Walker, Burgess Avenue in Walker, Louisiana. I work for the company, I'm there accounting. They sent me here all night.
Okay. We ask everyone that we consider an alcohol permit to come on, come forward to council, kind of put them on the record, make sure they understand the laws as it relates to selling alcohol to minors.
Yes, sir. We have four other businesses in the area, Independence. I think we have one in Amy, one in Arkola, one in Independence, and a one in Covington. So this is our, it's the same order.
It is, very nice.
Thank you.
So just if you, if you can pass that word on it, you know, they will be checked.
Yes, sir.
We expect them to follow laws as it relates to sale of alcohol to minors.
Right.
Kind of put you on the record.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beer.
Aye.
Jason Hood. Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Final adoption of ordinance, of ordinance, final adoption of ordinance to amend the city of Hammont budget for fiscal year 2015, 16, in accordance with the procedures set within section five dash zero-three of the city of Hammont charter.
Motion to approve.
Yeah. Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beer.
Aye.
Jason Hood. Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Item number two, final adoption of orders to adopt city of Hammont budget fiscal year 2016, 17, in accordance with procedures set within section five oh-three of the city of Hammont charter.
Mr. President, we need to amend the budget. We made a change on the adopted, from the adopted budget work session, and we're asking, I'm asking that we put an additional twenty thousand dollars back into the budget to fund the marshal's office at the request of the amount from last year. That those twenty thousand dollars would come from the general fund, which would increase the general fund. Well, it would take the total from, to eight seventeen, two ninety-one. We would take that from the general fund, which would raise the general fund revenue to two forty-one, two ninety-one, and it would reduce the end-of-year balance to one seventeen, eight fifty-six. It's an amendment.
So, councilman, you're making a motion to approve the budget with those changes?
Do we have to amend or just approve with those changes?
You can approve it with, as recommended by the mayor, with those changes. If everyone understands the motion, then we can proceed.
Well, we can just do that as a.
Yep.
Correct.
All right. Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beer.
Aye.
Jason Hood. Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Item number three, final adoption of orders to adopt the following adjusted miller's rates, and they are hereby levied upon the dollar of assessed valuation of all property subject to adware of taxation within said corporate limits of the city of Hammont for year 2015, 2016, for the purpose of raising revenue.
Motion to approve.
Roll call, please.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beer.
Aye.
Jason Hood. Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Item number four, final adoption of orders to increase the miller's rates, but not to exceed the prior year's maximum rates on all taxable property within the corporate limits of the city of Hammont, shown on the official assessment roll for the year 2016, and when collected, the revenues from said taxes shall be used only for specific purposes for which taxes have been levied, said miller's rates are listed below.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beer.
Aye.
Jason Hood. Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number five, final adoption of orders to approve rezoned requests by Charles Street LLC to rezon 507 to 509 West Charles Street from RS eleven to RS three, higher Kate overlay, recommended approval, two to one, with the understanding that any subdivision requests will be brought to the planning commission for approval. Go move. Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beer.
Aye.
Jason Hood. Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number six, final adoption of orders to approve rezoned requests by Andrew and Jeanette Gasway to rezon 511 West Charles Street from RS eleven to RS three, higher Kate overlay, recommended approval, with two to one, with the understanding that any subdivision requests will be brought to the planning commission for. Go move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beer.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Jason Hood. Motion approved.
Number seven, final adoption of orders to revise ordinance two-five-two-six, restricted conditional use requests by Michelin Incorporated for sections one, two, and three, to read RM two and section six, to read in accordance with site plan by environmental design system dated revised four twenty-six, 2016, to allow, in addition to existing building located eleven oh-six South Holly Street, zone RM two conditional use and Iowa addition overlay. Recommended approval by zoning commission. Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.